Broken out. There's some other improvements, lighting we have and such. But this is, um, this is to put in the system that appears like stucco, that is, and with all wood trim on all those cornices and stuff, which, um, you know, is a higher value material. And I think it'll be a higher value appearance to the building. And, um, I did show you a rendering in your picture in your backup package as to what that would involve. Um, and this again is, is to be funded through LoSiP. Um, I think there's a pretty good chance we get that, that approval because basically the state has requested that and appreciated that. That's it.
This is, this is Chairman Burke. Thank you very much for your explanation, Director Seer. Um, do any of the committee members have questions for the director at this time?
This is Counselor Sadi. I do not have any questions at this point in time.
Thank you very much, Counselor Sadi. Um, do any of the, um, other city councilors, noncommittee members have questions for Director Seer at this time? Um, I'll ask one. Um, so, uh, Ryan, if we, um, if, if, uh, everything is approved tonight and LoSiP approves both of these expenditures, um, approximately how much LoSiP funds would, do you know if we would have left before they're re-upped again?
Yes, um, I'd have to do some quick math. If we're 441 currently, um, sixty-five to thirty-one, sixty-five, ninety-six, four forty, about three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars left.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense to me. Um, last, last before I call, uh, the vote on this cam, last call, any, um, councillors have a question on this matter? Hearing none, seeing none, I will ask, uh,
Counselor Sadi does have one question.
Yep, go, this is Counselor Burke, go ahead, Counselor Sadi.
Mister, this is, uh, Counselor Sadi through you to, um, Director Seer. Uh, the money that is left over, what is that earmarked for at this point in time?
It is not. It's open.
And so none of that is earmarked for, uh, road improvements?
No. Our road improvements are currently funded through our bonding interest structure bond.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
Thank you very much, Counselor Sadi. Any last discussion? Hearing none, seeing none of committee members, all those in favor of the main motion can signify by saying aye.
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 All the opposed say nay. And the motion carries, uh, three zero, um, at six twenty-five. I will call the last motion of the committee meeting.
A motion to adjourn. This is President Protemp Nerthatis.
Second, Counselor Sadi.
Thank you. Moved in second and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, the Public Works Committee meeting is adjourned at six twenty-six P M.
Thank you.
Started, this is President Protemp Nerthatis, Chair of the Administrative, uh, Administration Committee. Today is, uh, Monday, October fifth, two thousand and twenty. I'm going to call this, uh, meeting to order. It is now six thirty P M. Committee members, uh, on this committee are Counselor Booker and Counselor Dice, who are, um, present, um, along with, uh, other, uh, councillors that are also attending, uh, this call. Uh, Counselor Goodwin, uh, Counselor Book, um, Counselor Burke, Counselor Sadi. Um, I can't see President, uh, President Dominguez yet. He's probably on his way. And of course, the mayor is, uh, also in attendance. Um, we, uh, we're going to go ahead and start, um, I'm going to go and read this disclaimer here regarding our meetings virtually. And I'll read this and then we'll get started with, uh, public comment. Uh, due to the ongoing national and state public health emergency caused by global coronavirus pandemic, the City of New London public meetings will be held virtually. Meeting agendas can be found at W W W and then London C T dot org. An audio recording of this meeting will be posted on the city website within seven days of the meeting. Public comment may be submitted in writing to J stars and your London C T dot org. If you prefer, you may sign up to speak at the following link on the City of New London's website. And that website link, uh, can be found, um, on the webpage. Uh, it's W, it's, uh, New London C T dot org slash live dash stream. This link will bring you to a fillable form where you may submit your name and you will be added to the public comment list and called on via Zoom during the public comment portion of the meeting. Public comment must be submitted in writing or your name submitted on the fillable signup form on the city website at least fifteen minutes prior to the scheduled start time of the meeting. Please include your address in your written public comment submission. And for that, we will go to, um, our City Council Secretary Jenny Stars. Jenny, um, do you have some people that signed up?
Yep, I have three. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, first is Jason Barnwell.
President.
Mister Barnwell, welcome.
Hi.
You have the floor, state your name and your address and you have three minutes.
I'm Jason Barnwell. Address is eighty-seven Ashcraft Road, New London. Um, I would just like to say that, uh, I, I, I would just want to thank, uh, the city council, uh, for their consideration, uh, for the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, the vacancy. And, uh, I'm a resident, uh, of New London, born and raised here. And, uh, it's truly an honor to, uh, uh, to be a part of the decision-making process, uh, within our town. And, uh, and in terms of economic development. And, uh, I just want to say, I, I, I thank each and every one of you who are involved with this process and, um, yeah, I, I just thank you, thank you all.
Thank you, Mister Barnwell.
Thank you.
With, with that, we will go to the next person on the list, uh, Jenny.
Yep, it's, um, Karen Paul, and I think Dan has to unmute her.
Karen, are you there?
Unmute now.
Karen, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Karen Paul, two eighty-one State Street. So my question tonight is what happened to reading the list of vacancies on the board's agencies and commissions at the council meetings? Uh, I think you said you would do it once a month. I'm, you know, haven't heard it for a while. And I know of a couple or more applications that were submitted and confirmed as being received in July. And I have still not, uh, seen that they've been addressed by the Administration Committee. Is there a reason? Is there a reason why applications are not being brought to the Administration Committee meeting so that the public knows what's going on and how this process works? I will be looking forward to your response. Thank you.
Okay, Jenny, uh, next person on the list.
Uh, Kat Goulart.
Okay, uh, Kat Goulart, state your name and address and you have three minutes.
Good evening, Kat Goulart, fifty-four Dow Street. Uh, good evening, committee members. Uh, for those who don't know, I'm the current Chair of New London's Police Community Relations Committee. Uh, it was brought to my attention this afternoon, um, that the committee has pulled one of the applications it had intended to address this evening, apparently because it's waiting for the report from the Public Safety Policy Review Board. And you'll have to forgive me if I've, um, misstated the name. I know it's changed a couple of times. Um, uh, so a few notes on that action. Um, the Police Community Relations Committee is still a functional board established by charter, the New London City Charter. Um, we are meeting tomorrow. There's a meeting on the calendar. Um, we continue to conduct regular business. None of that has changed. We still have a vacancy. Um, we have not been consulted by the review board despite repeated attempts at outreach and repeated attempts to be consulted by the review board. Um, as a matter of fact, there is a subcommittee on that review board, uh, titled Police Community Relations Committee. Uh, there has been no outreach from that subcommittee to the P C R C. Um, the next meeting of the review board is October fourteenth. I confirmed with the mayor's office this afternoon. Um, I don't know that there is or isn't a report coming out on that date, but that's two weeks away. Until and unless a recommendation is made by that committee and then secondarily a charter change is made, the P C R C exists as it is. And this committee shouldn't be holding up appointments. No one from that board, I'm sorry. Um, it is wholly inappropriate for this committee to hold up appointments to a functioning city committee for a report that might be ready in a few weeks. It seems that the agenda of this committee is clear, to shut down the P C R, P C R C, using your authority as committee, uh, committee members by proxy and doing so is really inappropriate. You have to stop doing stuff like this. Just because you have the power to do it doesn't mean that you can. There's a vacancy, it needs to be filled. And I'm asking that you please do that tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Jenny, anybody else sign up?
No, that's it.
Okay, um, so I'm going to open it for, um, some comment, um, on, on, uh, on the, um, actually, you know what? What I'm going to do, I'm just going to respond before we go to, uh, to, to the, to the applications. One, we have a process. Um, and the process is, is that we encourage the general public to get involved and we, um, we ask that they fill out an application. That application is stamped, time stamped. Uh, it is submitted to the city clerk and the city clerk then forward, forwards that to all councillors. I want to make something very clear is that everyone who submits an application for a board of agency does not get on. Uh, it is not an automatic that just because you put an application in that you automatically get on a committee, um, and board. It is, uh, up to this council, it is up to the chair and the committee members to decide that, uh, uh, with many factors taken into place. So I want to be clear on that. Uh, we, we have a process where when somebody puts in an application, our secretary automatically generates an email and/or letter and sends it to that individual, um, comes from City Hall stating that we did in fact receive that application. Uh, furthermore, um, it is stated in our procedure that that application will be held on record for one year. Okay, after one year, uh, it is taken out and illegally destroyed. Um, and if somebody wants to apply for that same committee or a different committee, um, they'll have to come back and start the process all over that, all over again. That eliminates these applications, um, that are, that, that historically have been on record for three, five, ten years, right? So we have a process, we're sticking to that process. Um, and, and once again, not, not everybody that puts in an application gets appointed to a committee and a board, all right? With that being said, um, let's go ahead and go through the list of what we have before us tonight. Now, um, the first, uh, the first one I want to go through is for planning and zoning. And Jason Barnwell, who just spoke, um, is, uh, is being considered for moving from an alternate position into a permanent position uh, for plan, uh, planning and zoning. Um, so, uh, I'll give the opportunity if any one of the other committee members, Counselor Dice or Counselor Booker, want to comment on Mister Barnwell's application. Seeing none.
Yeah.
Um, we, okay, go ahead, uh, Counselor Booker.
Yes, um, I have known Jason Barnwell since two thousand and ten, when he was a student at Three Rivers Community College. And as a lifelong resident of New London, Mister Barnwell is committed to the continued improvement and development of our great city. He has a lot to offer this commission and leadership and expertise. And I would love to see this, um, move forward.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and vote on, uh, moving Jason Barnwell from, uh, an alternate up to a permanent. All those, those in favor, please signify by saying, uh, yea, and raise your hand for me so I can see. Okay, uh, all are in favor, so, uh, congratulations, Mister Barnwell. Let's move on to the second one. Uh, we're going to be looking at, um, the poet, um, Laureate. Uh, we have five applications before us. There are five positions open for that committee. I'm going to go ahead and name, um, the members of the application and then, uh, open it up for either councillor to comment. The first one, uh, is Chloe Murphy. The second one is Clayton Potter. The third one is Michael Bradford. The fourth one is Rhonda Ward. And the fifth one is Tracy Reiser. Those are the five open positions that will make up this committee. Do either Counselor Dice or Counselor Booker any comment before we, um, vote on this?
This is Counselor Dice speaking. And I, I like to say that, um, I was really impressed by all the people who had, um, put their head in the reins to be involved. So I know, um, all of them personally, and I think this, I'm thankful that they are stepping up, so Counselor Dice speaking, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dice. Counselor Booker?
Yes, I would like to thank everyone who applied to be on the poet laureate committee, Chloe Murphy, Clayton Powder, um, Michael Bradford, Rhonda Ward, and Tracy Reiser, incredible individuals in our great city who are doing some phenomenal work. And I'm looking forward to the establishment of this committee and for us an honor and a celebration in New London in this way. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Booker. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And that's three, so, uh, this also, congratulations to those five individuals. Now, there is something else on the agenda, um, and Jenny, um, this is a, this is for Parks and Rec, correct?
Yep, Parks and Rec, the alternate.
So what we're doing is we're moving, um, a, a current alternate to a permanent, um, position. Uh, and, um, do I have his name? Refresh my memory, what was the gentleman's name?
It's Alberto Garcia.
That's it, okay, Alberto Garcia. All right, so Alberto Garcia, he has, uh, successfully been serving on Parks and Rec as an alternate and, um, gotten some really positive feedback and we like to move him up to a permanent position. Any discussion or any comments from Counselor Dice or Booker? Okay. All right, those in favor, go ahead and signify by raising your hand. And that is three, so that also passes. And that, uh, concludes what we have tonight on administration. All, I will, um, entertain a motion at this time.
Counselor Dice, um, motion to?
Adjourn?
Adjourn.
Adjourn, thank you, thank you.
All right, this, uh, this meeting is adjourned at six forty-four P M. Uh, city council resumes at seven P M, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to everyone. My name is Eflain Dominguez Jr. I'm the president of the New London City Council, and I want to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. It's seven o'clock. And with that, I'll get started with just reading the logistics. Due to the ongoing national and state public health emergency caused by the global coronavirus pandemic, City of New London, public meetings will be held virtually. Meeting agendas can be found at www新LondonC.org. An audio recording of this meeting will be posted on the city website within seven days of the meeting. Public comment may be submitted in writing to jstart@newlondonct.org. If you prefer, you may sign up to speak at the following link on the City of New London website. That's newlondonct.org/life-stream. This link will bring you to a fillable form where you may submit your name, and you will be added to the public comment list and called on via Zoom during the public comment portion of the meeting. Public comment must be submitted in writing or your name submitted on the fillable signup form on the city website at least 15 minutes prior to the scheduled start time of the meeting. Please include your address in your written public comment submission. At this time, I will call on City Clerk Ayala to do the roll call, please.
President Dominguez.
Present.
President Protemp Natarzaz.
Present.
Counselor Booker, Jr. Counselor Dice.
Present.
Counselor Sadi.
Present.
Counselor Goodwin.
Present.
Counselor Burke.
Present.
All present.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I am going to welcome the mayor, mayor pastoral, attorney Landrigan, and every department head that is on this meeting right now. And of course, all the residents and those that are invited guests this evening. Okay, with that said, I am going to do the prayer. And now I ask Daniel to put the flag up, please, on the screen, and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for. Stay standing as I say it in Spanish. Prometo lealtad a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América, a la república que representa una nación ante Dios, indivisible, con libertad y justicia para todos. Thank you. Again, just again, quickly, this is President Dominguez speaking. Every time you speak, make sure that you pronounce your name so we can record it, mark it for the record. And with that said, I am going to begin no public hearings and now move to the minutes of previous meeting. I need a motion.
This is Counsel Sadi. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 21, 2020, meeting of this New London City Council.
I'm looking for a.
Counsel Dice, second.
Yes, thank you. And now any any further comment on it before we go? Okay, seeing none, let's go. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion carries. Next, we will begin with public comment. Again, public comment, you will have three minutes. City Clerk Ayala will let you know. Once you start, your three minutes start, and then when there's then with one minute left, you'll be notified, and then we'll notify you again when there's 10 seconds, you can start closing. Make sure, please, that you state your name, first and last name, and your address. With that said, I will begin with Karen Paul.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Karen. Go ahead.
Okay. Karen Paul, 281 State Street. For those of you that may have been listening to the Administration Committee meeting, I am going to repeat the part of what I said then. When this council first was elected, the second or third meeting that you had, the Administration Committee Chair stated that she would be reading or sharing with us a list of the vacancies on all boards, agencies, and commissions. I think it happened twice, and I haven't heard it since. I wonder what happened. I know of a couple of applications, or maybe more, that were submitted in July and confirmed that they were received. One of them, for sure, is was for the Senior Affairs Commission, which has three openings. So why this person has not been appointed, I do not understand. I would like to hear a reason. If you want to call me or email me privately, that's fine, but I would like to know why this person was has not been accepted. On another note, who's covering the overtime for Public Works to repaint those stripes? Or is the organization that promoted the idea of this covering it? Because Public Works can't seem to get the potholes filled in the streets, but they can paint the stripes. What is this, the third time now? And it's done on a Sunday? Come on, guys. On a positive note, and I'm sure I would expect the mayor to talk to this later, to mention this, but I do want to thank Jeannie Milstein for sending me the information on the upcoming weekly Connecticut Food Bank Dairy Express. Going to be on Thursday mornings at the Elks Club, 81 Washington, from 9:00 to 10:30. And it's called the Connecticut Food Bank's Dairy Express. So for all of you out there that are food, I can't remember the word that they call it, but are having trouble with food. It's supposed to be milk and other dairy products that they'll be giving out weekly Thursday mornings. So Jeannie, I thank you for forwarding that to me today, and I do hope that the mayor speaks to.
One minute.
Later. Thank you. Good evening.
President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, Karen. And she is the only one that we have signed up today. So with that said, I'm going to move on to petitions. There are no petitions, and then response to public comment. Again, any counselor that wishes to respond, please raise your hand so I will know I'll call on you, and you have at least three minutes to respond. Okay, I see. Go ahead. Counselor Burke.
Thank you very much, President Dominguez. Counselor Burke here. I would just like to thank Karen Paul for bringing up the amazing work that our Public Works employees are doing with the rainbow painting on the corner of Eugene O'Neill and Golden Street. I also saw them out there on Sunday. I ran into them the other week and had a discussion with Director Seer about how they were trying a different kind of paint so that the new display on the ground there remains intact, you know, beautifully displaying the diversity of our city. So I just wanted to bring that moment up to thank Director Seer for checking that out. Thank the Public Works workers who, you know, put in the work making that happen. And to remind us, Paul, that fixing potholes would be something that would be done by a contractor, not employees of the Public Works Department. And nothing further on that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. This is President Dominguez. Thank you, Counselor Burke. Is there any other counselor that wishes to respond to public comment? All right. Seeing none, counselors? Oh, John, John, John. I only saw your hand. I can't see your name now when you show. So Counselor Sadi, go ahead, sir. I just saw your hand. I'm sorry.
Just just like to thank Karen Paul for being so attentive and notifying us through the meeting of the the give the hand away that they're going to give out. Thank you. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Sadi. This is President Dominguez. Any other counselor that wishes to respond? If not, we won't move on. All right. Thank you. All right. So at this time, I am going to go to reports and communications. Director Law, Attorney Landrigan, does anybody have any questions for Attorney Landrigan? Okay, John, I see you. Counselor Sadi, go ahead. You have the floor.
Thank you, Counselor Landrigan. One question, and that was in reference to your report. Anyway, thank you. Under General Side Number Three, electronic sign emails with congressional staff regarding the sign. Could you expand upon that, please?
Sure. This is Attorney Jeffrey Landrigan speaking. This is regarding the electronic sign down on Eugene O'Neill near the pedestrian overpass. The city has been dealing with Department of Transportation regarding the validity of the sign. DOT has been making some claims that the sign is in violation of a federal Highway Beautification Act. They've given us an opportunity to talk to our congressional leaders to get some clarification as to whether or not that sign does in fact violate that act. And if it does not, it should have a long and healthy home here with the city. So we're just in the process of having that discussion with Representative Courtney's office.
Thank you very much. And in reference to the litigation area, under Number Four, could you please update us on the Cudrello versus Osprey Estates?
Yeah, Jeffrey Landrigan speaking again. This is a cause of action where the plaintiff has brought suit against the private property owner developer that is building a house next door to the plaintiff's property. And at this time, the case is pending in Superior Court. There is a an injunction application filed by the plaintiff. They asked for it to be granted ex parte, meaning prior to any hearing being held by the judge. That was denied, and now we are basically sitting in the backlog of cases because of the COVID pandemic. So there's nothing really new to report there. There is no injunction holding back the defendant who is building the house. So my understanding is that the construction has continued forward. But as to when any hearing on the injunction will be heard, that's to be determined. But as to when any hearing on the injunction will be heard, that's to be determined.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions of the Director of Law. This is Counselor Sadi.
President Dominguez speaking, thank you, Counselor Sadi, for those questions. Any other counselor that wishes to ask a question to Attorney Landrigan? All right, I do, I do have one. She doesn't have the hook yet. All right. So it's just to piggyback on that, on one of the questions that Counselor Sadi had about the electric sign. Are we, I recall, I mean, are we making money out of that? Are we getting some revenue for? Just curious, we are, right?
This is Attorney Landrigan, yes. We have a, we have a corporate relationship, if you will, with the person who constructed the sign. And we get rent from them in addition to a percentage of the money that they charge for the advertising. For the last several months, for the better part of this year, no advertising revenue has been coming in. And that is with the agreement with DOT while they were going through the application process. While the sign manufacturer, the sign company was going through the process with DOT. DOT asked that it not be used and the sign manufacturer had acquiesced to that request. But short answer to your, or I should say, long answer to your question is, yes. If and when the sign remains and if and when advertisements come back, the city gets monthly rent for the sign being there in addition to a percentage of the revenue generated by the advertising.
Okay. This is President Dominguez. Thank you, thank you, Attorney Landrigan. All right, so with that said, we're going to move on. Okay, to the next item, which is Council Committee Reports. Now let me call on Counselor Burke.
Thank you very much, President Dominguez. This is Counselor Burke. Earlier this evening, the City Council's Public Works Committee met at 6:00 PM to discuss a couple of items regarding the fire headquarters, including HVAC updates as well as a change order on the fire headquarters roof, all of which would be funded under LoCIP or requested to be funded under LoCIP. And all of the CAMs on the committee agenda were set forth to the full council for our consideration this evening. And nothing further. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. This is President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, Counselor Burke. At this time, I'm going to call on President Pro Temnartatas.
Thank you, President Dominguez. This is President Pro Temnartatas. We did have an Administration Committee meeting tonight at 6:30 PM. There were five poet, poet laureates that were that will form a committee. We also moved one P and Z alternate to permanent position and one alternate Parks and Rec to a permanent position. We also reviewed the process of submitting an application for consideration. Thank you.
Okay, this is President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, President Pro Temnartatas. At this time, I'm going to call on Counselor Sadi, you have a report for committee.
Yes, sir. Yes, I'd like to report that the School Building and Maintenance Committee is meeting on a regular basis. On the third Friday of each month, they meet to discuss the Benidover Jackson Middle School Rehabilitation Project. And on the fourth Friday, they meet to discuss the exciting events that are going on at the New London High School campus. At our last meeting of the South Campus, the committee voted to forward to this committee $68,000 request for architectural services to split the Board of Education Buildings fire pump and HDMI room from, to split it with Benidover. Right now, they're both connected. Thank you very much.
Okay, President Dominguez speaking, thank you, Counselor Sadi. And at this time, we'll have is we're going to the mayor's Office of Communications. Okay, Mayor Pastor, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, President Dominguez, members of City Council, staff and the community. Good evening. I'm going to start with an event that's going to be happening this Wednesday, October 7th, at Parade Plaza. It's called the Million Mask Challenge Tour. This is hosted by Connecticut Rotary. They, they've engaged in this 92 Rotary Clubs and their over 4,000 members have raised and spent more than $500,000 to help our communities during the COVID crisis. So it's this huge effort to obtain PPE. So they will be, there will be a truck down there at Parade Plaza on Wednesday at 4:00 PM to pass out, to deliver masks to, to our community. The truck is filled with 800,000 masks and it's going to be making stops in all different communities. The distribution at Parade Plaza is a joint effort with the Waterford Rotary and the New London Rotary. So that's, we thank the Rotarians for that. Great social service organization. This was brought up during public comment, but we are really happy to be teaming up with the Connecticut Food Bank and their Dairy Express Program. This will be a weekly distribution of milk and some dairy products. They will set up every Thursday from 9:00 AM till 10:30 AM at the Elks Parking Lot. And we thank the Elks for allowing us to use their facility. This is, the product is being donated by Borden Dairy, Gaiters Dairy and the Emergency Food Assistance Program. So we think this is going to be another great asset to try and relieve some of the food insecurity that we currently have in the city. It's increasing unfortunately due to the pandemic. On the food distribution efforts that we're monitoring very closely, we're in a transition with the United Way and the Connecticut Food Bank. And I'd like you all, I forwarded to the council members, the email with the link, the Human Services Network meeting that's sponsored by Liberty Bank and our Human Services Director Jeannie Milstein is meeting tomorrow morning, 8:30 to 10:30. I know Fiona is always on these calls, I'm not sure how many of the rest of you have been, but it's a great, a great way to catch up with what all the social service agencies are doing tomorrow. But tomorrow's meeting will be devoted to a discussion with the food service providers and their efforts to, to meet the growing food insecurity in, in our region. Also, there'll be a new partnership with the Connecticut Food Bank that's being developed right now. And those efforts will be discussed and questions will be answered about the changes for some of our food distribution agencies in the city of New London. We were really pleased to swear in a new police officer next week, excuse me, the last week. His name is David Diogo. He's 20-year veteran, very experienced. And we welcome aboard and we welcome him aboard and we're happy to have his talents working for us. The body cams program is, the officers are currently in training, so that's underway. They'll be rolled out in the near future. We also have begun receiving the, the new patrol cars that, that were budgeted for this year. So they are now joining the fleet and hitting the roads now. And our recruiting effort continues. We are currently, as you know, if you've seen some of the recruiting posters, we're recruiting new members of the department. No experience necessary. We'll provide the training and we're hoping to recruit members of the New London community to, to join our local police department. It's the last month of the census. So this is the final push, ladies and gentlemen. We're going after all those people who have yet to be counted. It's, it's, it's important for our, as we've gone over and over and over, it's important for our federal funding for the next 10 years. We get locked into whatever our final number is in this census count. So we're, we're down to obviously the hardest count people, the ones that we have not been able to persuade, persuade to participate or have not yet touched. We need everybody's effort to be checking with their neighbors. Any people that they're working with or coming to contact with through organizations to just ask them, ask them if they've been counted, encourage them, it takes less than five minutes, just go on a computer. If they need help, they can get it at the public library. I'll be down at Fireboat, at the Fireboat firefighter, the New York City, retired New York City Fireboat that's been on our waterfront all summer. They are leaving tomorrow morning for some, some overhaul at a boatyard up in Rhode Island. So I'm just going to present them with a, with a an appreciation, a token of our appreciation for gracing our waterfront all summer. A lot of people have gotten a chance to tour that historic boat that took place in the, that took part in the evacuation of Manhattan during September 11th. And I hope you all got to see it and we hope that it'll come back sometime in the future, but we've enjoyed having it here all summer. We're continuing to work on with the Parks and Rec and our Education Long Term Recovery Committee on developing our distant learning centers. The, the one at Ocean Beach is up and running. We're developing a model that the state is looking at and we, we hope to, to be moving towards a second center in the near future. We're working on many issues to do with that, including the budget. But as you know, we, we got a big boost in that project with the CDBG funding that was appropriated at the last meeting for that effort. But I want to thank Parks and Rec and our Learn Term Recovery Education Committee for their, their work on that. It's a heavy lift, but we're getting it done. See what I've. Oh, yes. Now, you know, I'm sure you've been following in the nude, in the news, the, this, the uptick in the reported cases of COVID-19 in our community. The North Schools have shut down and there's, you know, growing concern in Eastern Connecticut about a surge in the, in the pandemic. I've been, we, you know, our staff, of course, is still meeting every day at 2 o'clock. Our, we have never let down our guard or our vigilance in combating this. There is unfortunately no information as to what's causing this, this uptick in, in Eastern Connecticut. But we have a good team of people that are working hard to meet the challenge. Rather than go into all the details and statistics and data, I'd like to invite you to, to get on a call that's going to be sponsored by Ledge Light Health District, a public information forum that will be held. The time is not set, but we've been told to keep open between 10 o'clock and 12 o'clock on Wednesday. It'll be one hour, so it'll be one hour during that time period and I'll get you final information as soon as I know about it. But, you know, we'll get all the up-to-date information. In the meantime, I think it's, it's very important that we just continue to emphasize for our, our community members to keep their vigilance up, to wear their masks. If we wear our masks, if we keep our distance from other people, we can, we can greatly mitigate the community spread of this virus and all the other negative effects that come from that, especially the human toll, the morbidity and the mortality that we're experiencing. So we want to protect our neighbors, we want to protect our family members from, from this virus and it's going to take all of us to continue to practice those safe measures that we've all become very accustomed to by now, but we don't want to let our, our guard down. On that note, we've been working over the last week or so to increase testing in our community. We're working with the Community Health Center and with the Department of Health. Jeannie Milstein has been, you know, asked by the Governor's Office to coordinate an expansion of COVID testing in, in New London, specifically in our city. The Community Health Center has expanded their hours or intend to in the very near future. They've been doing testing from nine to, nine to two or not, nine to one or nine to two, they will be going from 8:30 to four in the afternoon. It's a very convenient process. I've been through the line myself three times. So you essentially, you register online, if, you know, ahead of time, it's not absolutely required. That just speeds up the process going through the line. The Community Health Center is also going to be working with Jeannie Milstein and with Ledge Light Health District to bring that testing program out into the community. So they're going, you'll be hearing about different locations where they're going to be setting up testing outside of those hours and into communities where we might not be reaching. And, you know, we believe this is a very important process. And, you know, we are also, it's, it's, it can be inconvenience, inconvenient for people and we don't want to deny anybody the benefit of our city services and nobody should lose out on city services. But we are not able to open our, our city buildings up to the public. At this time, we're going to continue to keep the buildings locked down. We have some employees that are still coming to the city to work and we want to keep them safe. We do, of course, have as many employees that can do their job remotely, doing it remotely to keep themselves, themselves safe. We have a very good track record through this, through this months-long pandemic and we want to keep it that way. So, but there's, there should be no, no residents in the city who feel left out of, of accessing city services. There are numbers, phone numbers posted on, on the doors of all our public buildings and we will, we will have the appropriate outreach to meet your needs. And so far, we're, we're not getting a lot of negative feedback from people that don't feel like they're, they're getting the services that they need. I'm going to leave it there. Don't think I forgot anything. I'm not going to take the time, you know, we're still, we're still actively engaged in all of our economic development projects and everything on that, on that front is, is really going full steam ahead. We don't, we don't thankfully see that being affected by this pandemic and so that's a good thing. So we're still working hard to build our economic future here in New London, to grow to grand list and to keep our revenues coming in. Thank you, President Dominguez.
President Dominguez speaking, thank you, Mayor Pastor. Do any of the counselors have any questions for the mayor at this time? As you, okay, yeah, Counselor Goodwin, go ahead, sir.
Who are you, Council President to the mayor? Two questions. Let's see which out of these. You had mentioned near future for, can you hear me?
Yes.
The space headphones on. You had mentioned near future for the body cameras. Is there expected date that will actually have our officers in those body cameras? And/or are we waiting for the completion of training for all officers before they actually are put on?
That is not a question I can answer, Counselor Goodwin. I can get to that answer, however, I, I want to be accurate in that. I know the training has, you know, just essentially begun, so I'll have to get a timeframe and how long that actually takes and when they're going to hit the street.
That answer would come from the police chief, sir?
Yes.
That is it at this time.
Right. This is President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, Counselor Goodwin. Any other counselor that wishes to ask the mayor a question? Okay, all right, seeing none, we're going to move up. All right, I see, I'm sorry, mayor, not, not yet. I see that Counselor Booker, last minute there, so go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I just have a quick comment for the mayor. Mayor, I just want to thank you, thank you, Mayor Pastor, for your transparency and your visibility. I saw you on NBC News today, so I want to thank you for explaining how we are taking the precautionary safety measures to protect residents against COVID-19. And also, I had the opportunity to see the historic Fireboat this past weekend. And it was great seeing. And it was great seeing two New London High School graduate, 2019 graduates, Ryder and Aiden, working on the historic Fireboat firefighter. So just thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. This is President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, councillor Booker, for sharing that. And I didn't know that, mayor. I'm glad that you're out there sharing all over the state what we're doing here in the city.
Mr. President, to councillor Booker, if those two students are available tomorrow at eight thirty, that would be, if you get, if you get in touch with them, it's really short notice. But the boat is even tomorrow, and I will be making a presentation if they
I think they're going to be there tomorrow, but I'll definitely send them a message.
Okay, great.
Great. All right. Very good. That's which call teamwork. Thank you. All right, at this time, we're going to be doing the consent agenda.
Thank you, President Dominguez. This is President Protemp Nortades. Consent agenda that the consent agenda proposal set forth at the regular meeting of October 5th, 2020 are either one, accepted for the record, two, referred to committee names, three, waived from committee to be acted upon as proposed, or four, consented to as proposed. Can I get a second?
Councillor Burke will second.
Thank you, councillor. This is President Dominguez. Thank you, councillor Burke. All right, I'm going to read these and make sure councillors that you are, you're going to pull one. Say your name nice and loud. Okay, so here we go, seven point one. A, B, C, D, E, F, and G. Seven point two. Seven point three, A and B.
This is councillor Burke. I will I will pull B.
Okay. All right, so seven point three, B. All right, thank you. Councillor Burke. All right, eight point oh, new business, eight point one. Eight point two.
Point point of order, President Dominguez. Did you say seven point three, C?
Yes, I said, yep, A, B, and C, and then Burke. Councillor Burke said I'll pull B. Did you want to pull C?
No, no, sir.
Okay. All right, is that it?
Yes.
All right. Okay, so let me get back to, all right, so I'll go back to eight point one. Eight point two. Eight point three.
Burke will pull eight point three.
Councillor Burke will pull eight point three. Got it. And councillor Dice, did you want to pull one?
Um, councillor Dice, it was eight point three as well. So I I concede to James, to councillor Burke.
Thank you. All right, let's continue to eight point four. All right, and then nine point or opponents, and I will pull ten point oh, that's executive session, and then we have eleven adjourned. All right. Go ahead, President Protemp Nortades.
All items have unanimous support of the city council are hereby adopted with a single roll call vote. The motions are seconded. The chair calls the roll, and the chair declares the motions to be unanimously voted and adopted. Can I get a second?
Second councillor Goodwin.
Thank you, sir. Okay, this time we'll have City Clerk Ayala do the roll call vote.
Councillor Burke.
Aye.
Councillor Goodwin.
Yes.
President Dominguez.
Yes.
Councillor Dice.
Yes.
Councillor Sadi.
Yes.
Councillor Booker Jr.
Yes.
President Protemp Nortades.
Yes.
Seven, yes.
Okay, thank you. The motion carries. All right, let's begin with seven point three, that's councillor Burke. Make sure every councillor you move to, move to cam.
Councillor Burke, move the cam.
Councillor Sadi, second.
Thank you very much. This is councillor Burke. In the committee meeting earlier, there was an amendment to this cam, so I'd just like to make a motion to amend the council agenda cam to match the cam from committee. For the cam to read, the city council approves expenditure of $31,859.70 to tradesmen of New England for purchase and installation of HVAC units for fire headquarters, adding the phrase after here contingent upon appropriation of low ship funds.
Second. That's councillor Sadi, second.
President Dominguez, thank you councillor Sadi. Any discussion on this from any of the
Yeah, just like councillor councillor Sadi.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just that we in the consent agenda approved low ship funds, low ship funds for this project. And so if for some reason they weren't to be approved, then we'd I we'd want to come back to council for proper funding before the project proceeds.
Okay.
That's all. Thank you.
All right.
Wait, point of order. I just want to make sure I understood what he was saying. Was that necessary in in terms of, are we missing anything in order for that to be procedural?
This is President Dominguez. I believe not. I think he just wanted to make state that, put it in writing or for the record.
This is councillor Goodwin. Thank you. I just want to make sure I was following.
No problem. This is President Dominguez. Thank you councillor Goodwin for that clarification. All right, so at this time, no further discussion. We're going to vote. Okay, so
What are we voting on? Are we voting on the amendment first?
We're, yeah, we're voting on the, yeah, on the the reliving of the amendment. That's what we're doing. Okay. All right. All right, so let's go. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries, all right?
The amendment carried, correct?
Yes, the amendment carries. The amendment carries. Now let's vote for the motion, okay? The main motion. All right, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Okay, so the motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to the next one, which is eight point eight point three. Okay, that is councillor Burke.
This is councillor Burke. Move the cam.
Second.
All right, that was, hold on. President Dominguez was seconded by councillor Dice. Go ahead.
Thank you. This is councillor Burke. The city council approves ordinance 10 520 dash two and the amount of one hundred one, one hundred thirty five thousand dollars made from accumulated funding received under the USDA Drug Enforcement Discretionary Fund. The ordinance is given its first and second readings in the process of page by title only. All counts are having copies. The third reading of the subject ordinance is adopted by roll call vote. And through you, Mr. President, at this time, do we have the chief of police or designated from New London Police Department?
No, we do not. If you need somebody to speak to this, the finance director is on.
Or my questions more pertain, I'll see if the finance director could, I mean, my questions really pertain is to what types of things the funds are expended on, so I'd really prefer to ask questions of the chief of police. So at this time, I would make a motion to table this ordinance until our next regular meeting.
Second.
Okay.
Councillor Goodwin.
Yep, thank you councillor Goodwin. This is President Dominguez. It has been seconded. All right, let's vote. All those in favor to table it until the next city council hearing, raise your hand.
Aye.
Say aye, okay, I think. Sadi, councillor Sadi, did I didn't see your hand. I didn't see, I don't know if you said aye or you said
I'm waiting for the nay.
Okay, all those, all those opposed.
Councillor Sadi's opposed.
Thank you councillor Sadi. All right, so the motion carries is is tabled for the next our next meeting, right? With that said, let's continue to the next one, which is eight point, wait, no, that's me. Sorry, guys. Executive session. All right, so let me read, move to cam.
Second councillor Sadi.
Thank you councillor Dice for the second. All right. Let me find this right here. Have it in front of me. All right, the city council will meet in executive session pursuant to general statute section one dash two hundred, parentheses six, parentheses letter E, with the mayor, the director of development and planning, the finance director, the director of RCDA, and or members of the law directors office to discuss a draft community host agreement with Northeast Offshore LLC. As such discussions are exempt pursuant to general statute one dash two ten, parentheses letter B, and parentheses number one. Okay, so we're going to be heading to executive session.
I'm waiting to be beamed up.
Okay.
For any passports?
Should be beamed up soon.
And then eventually we'll come back. Hopefully, we will.
Beam me up, Scotty.
Thank you.
Some people got a haircut, others got some more hair I guess. Alright so I'm going to entertain an emotion from council to Goodwood.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second, by president for Tim.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Don't leave yet. All those opposed say nay. No joking. Alright guys.
Nay. Have a good night.
Have a good night everybody. Thank you so much. Bye bye.